Yep. Okay, good evening. Thank you for waiting. This is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for comments by members of the public during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the Board of any topics included on tonight's agenda may do so by signing up on the public comments sign-in sheet by the entrance prior to the start of the meeting. The Board requests refraining from making any comments involving personally identify information about students, staff, or administration. Comments should be respectful, focused on the items being considered by the Board, and will be restricted to three minutes in length. So, the, keep going, right? All right. The action taken at today's meeting will be final approval unless otherwise noted. So, call to order. We have met with all official notifications. Roll call, vote, please.
Shelley Moon.
Here.
Catherine Gomond.
Here.
Bergavsky.
Here.
Nick Olson.
Here.
Sarah Shuber-McCon.
Here.
Nick Schumacher here, and President Steve Olson virtual.
Here.
Excellent.
Can we use that? Okay.
All right, thank you. First is comments by members of the.
Normally, you have to pledge.
Oh, yep, sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Was not on the agenda. Clearly, I'm novice. All right. So, the first agenda here is comments by members of the public. We have Christina Kintop regarding transparency.
So, I see that it's a discussion item tonight. Len and I, we'd like to maybe just give some context as to the history of this. This is nothing new. In 2015, there was WSB, it was inactive, we had a similar one, I believe, in front of you. Adopted by the entire WSB across the state. There were several school districts at the time that also signed on. I believe according to our recollection, that Superior was one. So, just again, a little bit of history. Superior has been a contributing partner for the Wisconsin Public Education Network. I have been part of the Wisconsin Alliance for Excellent Schools since my daughter was four years old. My grandson is now four years old. So, that's how long I've been in the fight for looking at equity and funding for public schools in the state of Wisconsin. I testified seven times in the joint finance committee on this. I've justified several times down in Madison. So, they, any chance I could get, I am testifying on how we need to make funding in Wisconsin more equitable for our public schools. So, going back with a little bit of history that I thought might be helpful for some context, all this resolution is, is simply saying that we want transparency. This board has been pretty proactive in the last, I believe, seven, eight years of talking about transparency and everything you do with all your communications about transparency. It is a theme we've heard in the community over and over and over, that the community wants transparency from our school board. I believe this administration has done an excellent job in their communication with transparency across their community. Pretty much anything that has happened behind the scenes, people in the public know about it, and who knows to all of you for that, because that was an accomplishment. I think several ran on transparency. So, that's all this is, is transparency in a tax bill. It's really quite simple. What we want, so what WSB wants, you know, sitting still in the legislature, just sitting there idle, so what's happening now is there are several communities across Wisconsin that are enacting. Green Bay is the first to do it, and they, all of Green Bay and the surrounding communities have now put this on their tax bill. They kind of, you know, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, right? We can use, utilize what they did. Simple to transparency. Your taxpayer dollars are going to fund, that's the amount of your taxpayer dollars are going to fund this much of charter schools. That's all it is. It's just a one liner on your tax bill. I think a move of the referendum you guys passed last year, after there was some increase in tax bills, that was pretty surprising to people. I think it's imperative and important for the school board to be very transparent in how those taxpayer dollars are being used. I think the community deserves to know that, and to see that in writing. I did see Superintendent Dr. Starzec, he just posted what this new budget will do to Superior. Could be absolutely crippling. I know I'm not telling you anything new, but it's the job you guys are tasked with. But I think now more than ever, we need to pay attention to the importance of public schools and that transparency and those tax dollars. So, I just kind of wanted to give a little groundwork that this isn't new. This has actually been sitting out there for quite some time. The Wisconsin School Board, or Wisconsin Association of School Boards, passed the same resolution, and I didn't get confirmation on the year. It was either 2015 or 16, somewhere in there or so. They have been doing this. There are several communities across the state that are in the process that you guys have. So, I think by enacting a resolution that the school board simply says that this are taxpayer dollars and the transparency, and this is where it's going to, is really important for the community to see that. Kind of next steps. Because we're, I've been working, like I said, I'm still serving on that board, that Wisconsin Public Education Board. I'm one of 10 that are still on it. I'm the only one that represents anybody north of Voltaire, because nobody thinks we exist up here. And like I said, the very first time I testified or listened to anything on this was when Kenzie was Board, and now I go on Sunday's Board. So, this is not, this is a fight that's been ongoing as far as funding. So, next steps, like I said, we're kind of using Green Bay. I can certainly be around to help with next steps, but it would just simply be an ask of the city to add that to the tax bill. So, I think the importance of the United School Board saying, we want transparency, and then the next steps. They're, they're still in the process of what that would be, but the very first thing would be the board adopt policies and such. And I don't know how you guys all work it. I can't necessarily interact from, by the way, I served 20, 19 and a half years on the school board, but I'm a little rusty, but Robert's Rules of Orders. You guys can always ask us questions. I don't think we can interact with you. So, if you have questions specifically for me, I'm very, may very well be able to answer.
Thank you, Dr. Kintop. Len, you are next.
Well, speaking first, pretty much. Just as an example, I still get questions asking, so I still get questions from people in the public, well, why are my taxes so high? Why am I paying so much money into the school? I still have to explain to them why, and you have to give that breakdown. All that money that you're paying in on your tax bill does not all go to this free public schools. A portion of that goes down to private schools in Milwaukee, charter schools, vouchers. That money all goes to different directions. They don't understand that, and I feel they, they deserve the right to know where that money's going. That's the transparency.
Thank you. Okay. Next agenda, we will get to that topic later in the agenda. So, the next thing is deposition of minutes from the July 14, 2025 meetings. Thank you for pulling that up.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or edits? Okay. It's a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So weird. All right, motion passes. Next was the report of the superintendent, where last week she went over informational items, which include the goals and action plan for 2025, 2026. She also went over the pilot program, cartwheel partnerships, and our sportsmanship initiative called Welcome to the Game. There were no discussion items and no action items. So, with that, I will request a motion to approve the superintendent's report. Make a motion to approve the superintendent's report. Okay, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move on to the Board Committee reports. The first step is the Budget and Insurance Company. We had one action item to consider, that is gifts, grants, and bequests. We recommend approval of accepting gifts, grants, and requests received in July of 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. We also had one discussion item, which is what our public comments were on. That is the Resolution of 25-05 Tax Bill Transparency. Can I get a motion? Just kidding.
So, are you, are you able to hear me?
Yes, very loud and clear.
All right, if I can add some context to this. So, first of all, Dr. Kintop and Len, thank you for being at the meeting and speaking to this. We had originally talked, Amy and I, about this resolution, and we thought it would be appropriate to have it as a discussion item. In some place along the line, it was fine, it went to an action item, but then I got ahold of Kyle and asked if that could be changed. So, I want to point out that I think it's very important, because when we discussed this a few weeks ago, very briefly, at our retreat, we didn't have a lot of time to have discussion amongst ourselves and to have questions and everything. I support the fact that it is listed on the tax bill, so our taxpayers in our community can see this, but there's other questions that come up. You know, how does this really affect our school district and stuff? And I don't know if I have all those, those answers. And by that, I mean, you know, is, are we opening ourselves up where other people could come to us and say, well, we want vouchers? And as I, as I looked at the whole Green Bay proposal and stuff, it, they proposed this in 2023, and they didn't get their city council to pass this until this past April. So, in reading some of their articles, you know, I found some things that, geez, I've got some questions about this yet, and, and I'm sorry, I can't be there in person with you, but it's, it's something that I said at the retreat, and I do echo again, I support this, but, but I do have some questions. We can have a very open discussion tonight, and Kyle, I'll just watch your head for yay or a nay, a yes or a no. You could actually move this to an action item, if you wish tonight, if you want to act on this right away tonight. The sooner we get this perhaps to the city council, the easier perhaps it'll be that they have the conversations about this tax transparency and that it would be listed on the December tax bill.
Okay.
Kyle, is that accurate yet?
Yeah, there is, what we talked about was there was kind of two means of being able to do it. One of them was reposting the agenda, and the other one was by way of motion. So, yes.
Okay, so that's where I sit right now.
I mean, are there negative consequences? I mean, what's the downside of approving this?
Nick, I have, yeah, I have the same type of question that you do.
I think one of the questions or concerns that came up is, you know, we don't want to get in the middle of this conversation about private versus public schools. You know, people have the ability to choose schools, and we obviously support that, but I think it's just important that people understand, like Len said, that, just an understanding that all of your tax dollars don't necessarily come to the Superior School District, that might be the understanding. And so, I think the point that David's made many times in the past, and it's on this resolution too, is, you know, they don't get the same level of reimbursement when it comes to special education costs. They don't get the same amount of per pupil spending that, that public schools do, and I think it just also creates another level of transparency across how public schools are funded and how it's different. So.
I, I personally see it, and I heard some of the concerns about other voucher schools, things like that, but for, since I've been on the Board a little over seven years now, I think, private schools and charter schools are exploding across the state of Wisconsin. So, it is inevitable that there will be more private and charter schools opening in our community, and I see it as we're jumping ahead of what that's going to look like. It's not, will that happen? It's when will it happen? And so, this is something that we need to think about. We do seem to have city counselors that would also maybe be supportive of this and also want transparency, because they also received a lot of calls when the tax increases went up, and everyone's pointing their finger, because they knew the referendum was, we know within four or five years, we may potentially have to go, we've been transparent about that, to another referendum. So, this is actually being proactive, in my opinion, of being transparent with our community. So, it has seen, I'm sorry, I did look this up. So, private schools have seen an increase across the state of Wisconsin, 6.7%, and charter schools have seen a slight, I'm sorry, 4.5% increase. So, they're blowing up across the state. I don't have worries about it opening the door. It's again, for the community to learn more about it. And I think, one other thing I just wanted to add about it, is that it has been setting in the legislature, and this is how it works in the public school setting. You act locally, and eventually it's statewide. That's happened repeatedly with a number of things, right? We want local control, and so this is a way for us to take control versus waiting for our legislature, which has not been super active. I mean, we're grateful for the increase of sped, but it's still not, again, to the accountability standards or reimbursement rates that we are struggling with. And so, we preach transparency. I think we've done a really good job. We need to continue, if that's really our belief as a Board, to move this to an action item and approve the resolution.
And again, I just, I guess I want to just reiterate one more time. I think the ask is that there's equity in transparency. We're obligated to produce our budget every year. We're obligated to publish it in the newspaper.
Report cards.
Report, there's, there's, there's high levels of transparency, and there's not necessarily equity in how we're funded either. And I think it's, it's good that families have lots of choices, but the reality is the, the what paces public schools isn't the same as what paces our private schools. And I think this is just one way of creating another level of transparency that doesn't currently exist, if that makes sense. I think we're that very well.
This is putting you on the spot, Amy, but how would you talk about, like, why is this important to do for our students?
Um, I think, I think when we talk about meeting the needs of students, every dollar that we get as a school district, we're thinking about how do we keep this in our classrooms? These are dollars that aren't going to our students in our classrooms.
Okay.
And so, you know, when we make decisions as a, as a district leadership, we're thinking about all the times that we can keep dollars in the classroom. These are just examples of dollars that aren't coming to classrooms.
Catherine, I see it as I was talking about with the referendum, right? If we expect to have to, and this is what many school districts are doing, repeated referendums are having to go forward. If we expect the community to invest in us and to approve that, if we have to go back to it again unless something drastically changes, we're showing them we're being transparent with our dollars. Well, you got this much money. Well, take a cut of that. Take a cut of this. It's not actually going to our kids. So, I see it as benefiting our future generations as well, and students, by, again, setting us up for a situation where there's no questions about where those dollars are going. Yeah, and I don't have any questions about that. It's more people, it'll resonate different with different people. Someone might just be like, well, why does this matter to my taxes? Or another person might say, why does this matter for the students? And I'm always going to be asking, why, why do this for our students? And I want to have those soundbites of, of how to share that for different types of people that want to know why.
Is there a cost associated with this?
No. So, Green Bay had to pull something off from the state, what is the cost, the additional cost? So, to the charter, say, name of the system.
Okay.
The business side of the side. I, I, I would prefer that we do something on this. I don't want this to be dragged out over months. That's one of the big issues has more issues. So, if we either do it or we don't do it, I don't, I don't want this to drag in the month, because there's a lot of other ramifications in the back end that come with that. And then, you know, it's the, it's been a 75% or so increase since 2022. So, it's just been increasing, I guess. This is, for selfish reasons, everybody comes to the school, they're supposed to say, be more transparent, be more transparent. 100% of our checks are owed on the board every single month. Our budget is on there, and this is another key part of it, that it's really hard to explain to people and say that, hey, $379,000 that I put out there didn't go towards public schools, it's just, we collected it to make.
Is there a communication then that would accompany the tax bill to explain what that additional line item is?
Yes, it's supposed to be pretty seamless, I guess. I will, you know, probably tap on Green Bay, and Green Bay's doing a vow, so that'll show it. What it is, is in my mind, we have to put on our tax bill where our referendum bills are. This would just be in the line, okay, this is the voucher schools. So, it's not private schools, it's voucher schools.
Thank you.
Not all private schools are voucher schools.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to move Resolution 2505-05 to an action item.
I'll second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Any further discussion?
So, now you gotta approve it? Did we just move it to an action?
On some action item now, you have to approve it. Yes.
Okay, so, the action item is to, sorry, move the discussion item of Resolution 2505 to an action item. So, I guess I'm going to ask, wait.
We just did.
Sorry.
This is my first meeting. Thank you.
That's okay.
Into an action, now we need to vote on the action, right? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Right, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Thank you.
Yeah, it's not a reiterating, but if you, if that's moving, that's somebody that already, I don't know, and well, but they're willing to kind of help guide, because like I said, I'm still working with WSB, so you don't have to reinvent the wheel. I think part of the reason to Green Bay so well, is they were starting from scratch. Everything they were doing was trying, trying to figure out process, that we wanted to use in their, their, so you don't have to reinvent them. So, kind of next steps, I'm willing to meet with you and help to see what I can guide for them. So, I did the touch base.
Thank you both for sharing that information too, and the context to it.
So, do we, do we understand that the resolution that's printed then is the resolution that's going to move forward?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
That's 2505, right?
Correct.
Exactly. David, all those numbers are still.
Okay, next steps will be communicating with broader stakeholders, like city council and.
Correct.
Thank you.
District shows that. No, David and I will not be doing that. We'll work with, with our leadership on how that's going to work.
Okay.
I would, I would assume that I'll probably be working with Christina or somebody else, whatever group.
Thank you, President Olson.
You are all contributing members to WPN, so you have access to this at any time, by the way. Superior is, they spark them from their website. You will see all of it. So, you don't need us, you got it there too.
Thank you. We did have one informational item, that's the Fund 10 Revenue and the Corrected Expenditure Preliminary Reports. With that, I'll ask for a motion to accept the Budget and Insurance Committee report.
Motion to accept the Budget Insurance Committee report.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I, all opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to the Operations Committee. There were no action items, no discussion items. There was one informational item, that was the Updated Long Range Facility Plan. Steve Guston, our Director of Building and Grounds, had shared that information. With that, I'll ask for a motion to accept the Operations Committee report.
Motion to accept the Operations Committee report.
All those, or I'm sorry, any further discussion items? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We now have the Personnel and Negotiations Committee. There was one action item. Administration recommends the approval of the Updated August New Hires and Separations Report.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Right, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Sorry, there were no informational items. Where am I? Forgot the information around us. Okay. Kyle, am I fine to keep going?
Yep.
Okay. We'll move into the Policy and Rules Committee. We do have.
Motion to accept Personnel Negotiations Committee report. Yep.
Thank you.
Second. Yep.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Right, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move into the Policy and Rules Committee. We have one action item with multiple policies. The Administration proposes the approval of changes to the following policies based on Neola recommendations in order to be in compliance with federal law updates.
I think we have to take them each separately.
Oh, okay.
I think so.
Got it.
Sorry.
That's okay. All right, so, first, we'll start with the Second Reading of Policy 1120, the Organizational Chart. This policy is being updated to reflect the most current organizational chart.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We'll go into the Second Reading of Policy 5113, Enrollment Program Inter-District. This policy is revised to incorporate verbiage regarding requirements to review a special education student's IEP to determine both space and availability.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move into the Second Reading of Policy 5341, Emergency Medical Authorization.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I guess I'd just note the small ad reading of, if needed. Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll now move to rescind Policy 5611, Due Process Right. This policy is rescinded because the contents are included in a more applicable Policy 5610, which is Suspension and Expulsion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We also have rescind of Policy 5710, Student Complaints. This policy is rescinded to avoid confusion regarding sources of student opportunities to raise concerns or complaints through appropriate channels.
Motion to approve.
So, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries. We had informational items as well, so rescinding the Administrative Guideline 2464B, Identification of Academically Gifted/. identification of academically gifted slash talented students. This guideline is being removed because the content does not align with the most current E L M S S handbook. We also rescinded the administrative guideline two two six zero point zero two linguid, uh, English language proficiency. This guideline is being removed because the content was moved into policy two two six zero point zero two. Approved July fourteenth of twenty twenty five. The newly approved E L handbook is the most current guidelines available. Another informational item was rescinding administrative guidelines five two zero zero A truancy flow chart. This guideline is being removed because its content does not align with the most current attendance expectations in the student handbook. Rescinding of the following guidelines listed below to make sure we are in compliance by directly adhering to the relevant legal statutes rather than internal guidelines. That is rescind administrative guideline one 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 A revising job descriptions for compliance with A D A five oh four. Rescind administrative guideline one 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 B verification of employment eligibility and rescind administrative guideline one four zero zero. Revising job descriptions for compliance with A D A and slash five oh four. There was also rescind administrative guideline five seven one zero truancy flow chart rescinded due to the deletion of policy five seven one zero above.
I just add one quick yes, ma'am. So you gotta drink a little. Um, just a reminder, these, all of these guidelines are very old and outdated. And as Anne and I are looking through all of our policies, we're going to try to clean up some of these administrative guidelines. You might see this in the next couple of months where we're trying to get rid of some old policies that are irrelevant and outdated. So just heads up for future meetings.
Thanks. Thank you. Um, that's kind of what we talked about at the retreat, right? Policy focus, cleaning up. All right. Um, discussion items. There was a review of board operating principles for the twenty twenty five, twenty six school year. WASB resolution submissions are due by September fifteenth of twenty twenty five, so um, please come uh with any ideas that maybe you have. At this time, I'll accept a motion um, to accept the policy and rules committee report.
Motion to accept the policy and rules committee report.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now we have the teaching and learning committee. There were no action items, no discussion items. There were informational items presented at the committee of the whole on Monday, August fourth. Uh, thank you to our presenters. We had Crystal Hinsman, uh, director of curriculum and instruction. She talked about the staff development days coming up and the new teacher orientation, which is excellent. Deanna was here, our director of student services. She did a presentation of the twenty twenty four, twenty five seclusion and restraint data as required. And Jennifer was here, our director of early childhood and family education, discussing summer school. At this time, um, I'll request a motion to accept the teaching and learning committee report.
Motion to accept.
Good teaching and learning.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? Thank you to the staff. Um, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Um, at this time, any other reports by members of the board?
I do have one. Um, the first annual Ryan Hoff Foundation and Superior Spartan golf outing was held this past Saturday at Nijami. Fifty-two teams of, of former uh, students and people in the community, um, attended. It was a wonderful event. Um, kudos should really go out to Ella Olson, our activities director. The Ryan Hoff Foundation Committee, the Superior High School Committee. Um, Paulo Letzko and Heidi Hoff, who really uh, stepped up late last year, uh, when, when Larry and Luann had decided that that was their last year to host the uh Hoff Foundation. But it was a wonderful day. Um, it coincided with the twenty year reunion of the class of two thousand and five. And we had a number of those, uh, former students in attendance and stuff. It was, it was a great day and we're looking forward. A number of us spoke yesterday when we were together for something and uh, about how we can make it bigger and better, but it was a great event.
Excellent. Thank you. I saw pictures from the high school reunion and some of the girls I had coached and cheerleading. I was like, oh my God, they look so cool. In a good way, like mature. Any other reports by members of the board? All right, um, district and program highlights from board members or district administrator.
Do want to just point out that starting tomorrow, for about two and a half days, we have about a hundred teachers coming in with principals and administrators to work through all of our new school improvement plans and their alignment to the new strategic plan and the district scorecard and the district CPR card. So we'll be rolling that out uh, with our teacher leadership teams. They'll be putting action steps together and creating their own CPR cards to align to our strategic, our strategic plan. And then our first day back, um, we have some fun planned, but we also plan on rolling out all of those school plans and district plans to staff on that first day back too. So I'm excited about the opportunities ahead of us with our new strategic plan and district goals. So, yeah.
I apologize I had to miss last week. Did you share an update about the retreat last week?
Really, um, mostly that we I mean, for the public's purposes, just knowing that we had one, kind of doing a plan for the upcoming school year and we reviewed some good board governance materials, but yeah.
Yeah, I just, I guess I want to say thank you to all the district administrators that had attended and took that much time out of their evening and shared with us their goals so that we can really think about what's coming ahead for the board. Um, and then also the work that we did as a team, um, looking at what makes an effective board and where we think we can do better and where our strengths are as a board. So thank you for putting that together. Okay. All right, so with that consideration of the bills and pre-approved bills.
I think a motion to pay the bills.
Well, second thought.
All right, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And with that, I'll call the meeting to adjourn. Thank you for bearing with me. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
No. Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
You want to.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. All, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thanks.